We now move then members to item five which is the health services in Pembrokeshire. And I'm very pleased to welcome Bernadine Reese who is the chairman of the Huellvar University Health Board and also with her Karen Miles who is the director of finance. Ladies, welcome to you both. May I invite you then to make your presentation to the council in whichever order is convenient to you.
Thank you very much, chairman. Can everybody hear me and can everybody see me? Thank you. It is with great delight that we've accepted your invitation to come to full council today. Well, I'm hoping that we can set out a new store for how we plan for health services and particularly as we're in Pembrokeshire to describe how we're going to do that today. But more importantly, I think we have to start to talk about what's happened to Pembrokeshire over the last few years. I think there's an element of emotion and a sense of pride around our services in Pembrokeshire, both in primary, community, mental health and acute service provision. And I think we as a health board also feel the same pride and passion as the public of Pembrokeshire do. There is an inevitability and we will get into that, I'm sure, later on with questions about the way that services will change. Services have to change and it is our responsibility to provide safe, sustainable services right across Huellvar Health Board and for the NHS in Wales, across the Welsh NHS. For me, I'm hoping as three months into a new job that we start to have, particularly within public service, a more healthier, frank and informed debate about the way we work together to provide our services. This is a tough time for all of us and particularly for areas that are rural, that are far west and we really need to be more mature and statesmanlike in the way that we manage our public commitment to be able to deliver for our population in Pembrokeshire. I know that because I had a year off, I was retired and I read the press and I know as an interested member of the public that we could have got a lot of things better. Our communication was patchy, our realignment with our staff, we could have done better. So I am here to say to you that while we had to take those decisions and those decisions are the appropriate and right decisions in terms of safety and quality, I do want to open a new dialogue that gives us an opportunity to be very clear about what we're actually providing in Pembrokeshire. So what I've asked the team to do is because over the last few years we've talked about what we're cutting in Pembrokeshire, what are we taking out of Pembrokeshire. Where is this rumour that Pembrokeshire, Withy Bush is closing? It is not closing. It will not close. It cannot close. For the people of Pembrokeshire, it is vital. It is strategically important in the way that we deliver our health services in Huellvar, but more importantly is strategically important for the Welsh NHS, for public services. There's a lot of partnership work that we do with colleagues within social care across Pembrokeshire. We've got really good evidence on the ground of innovative and care that supports an individual in their own environment. That's what our aim is. Where you need specialist intervention, you may have to travel for it, but that's been no different for years. So let's be very clear. Pembrokeshire has got a healthy, healthy approach to the way that we will be delivering health services. We need to have a new dialogue with our public. We need to have a new dialogue with yourselves because in many ways you are going to have to have the same dialogue with us in terms of how we manage the way that we deliver for public servants. It's a privilege to work and be part of what we support our population with. And I think we need to use that in a way that provides the confidence to our public in Pembrokeshire. I accept that within the Pembrokeshire NHS, part of Huellvar, we have got huge difficulties. We've got difficulties with recruitment. Why would somebody want to come and work in Pembrokeshire where when you read the press, it's all doom and gloom? When you talk to people in our hospitals, we're closing it and there is no evidence that we are closing our hospitals. So collectively, I'm asking you and I'm asking the population of Pembrokeshire to help us make Withy Bush and Pembrokeshire Health Services an employer of choice, that people will want to come. We know we need to do more work. We know we need to be out there talking to you. We know we need to be dealing with the exceptions where we've got it wrong. But we can only do that collectively. I've looked at the hotspots, Tenby. Issues in Tenby, we're working through them with the population of Tenby and some of those groups that have been supporting us in the past. I've looked at oncology and palliative care. We've got it so wrong. How did a good news story become a bad news story overnight? Because we weren't communicating and we thought we were. Oncology and palliative care in Pembrokeshire is going to be the best in the West. There is a commitment from the Pembrokeshire public that is second to none anyway and we need to be able to use that to recruit, to be able to work with those doctors that have been dedicated to delivering those services over the years. But they have to be accredited, they have to stand up in today's health service environment and quality. So for us, we know that we've got some things wrong. We know we want to work with the population and our clinician and our professional colleagues to get it right and we are open for a good debate on health services within Huellvar and within the Pembrokeshire component of that. We're looking at our plan through different eyes because in truth, we didn't really have a robust plan. What we want to do is to be able to look at all of our sites, all of our fixed points which are acute hospitals and determine what is being provided within those sites. They're not going anywhere because each and every one of them is strategically important to the way that we deliver services that take us into the community or take us out of the community and back into hospital when you need a specialist intervention or an acute intervention. So they're not going anywhere and you've heard it here from the horse's mouth. Pembrokeshire, Withy Bush is not closing. And if nothing else comes out of here today, that needs to, because we need to be working together to maintain good, safe, sustainable services for the population of Pembrokeshire. I'm now going to ask Karen to tell you where we've got to in terms of some of the work that we're doing in collaboration with others and we will be coming out then to talk to you in more detail and we're talking to Welsh Government. But there is a rosy future for Huellvar. We just need to be collective, statesmanlike and recognise that each and every one of us has got a responsibility to deliver that for our populations. So thank you very much and I'll ask Karen to continue.
Hello, everyone. Right, Karen Miles, I'm director of finance and have been a director of finance of Huellvar since its inception in October 2009. But I have only recently had the privilege of becoming director of planning as well since the 8th of September. So in six weeks, I've gone through somewhat a baptism of fire in aligning our service intentions with what we have as resources. There's no doubt about it, as a director of finance, I crawl all over resource. Now as director of planning, I am the different pair of eyes that the board has asked to look at how we match what we've got as capacity and capability in our localities, in counties and to say against that through a mapping and gapping and from there decide with our stakeholders where we take our next steps in providing health and obviously with partners, the social care element too. Right, in being asked to take on the mantle of how do you explain a complex organisation which the NHS is, the fact that we have to be responsive to many organisations that are outside of even Huellvar. So things like specialist services, as you know, there's a committee that deals with that on a national level. There's now what they call the South Wales Plan and that's going to have implications for Huellvar in particular with regard to our services in Swansea as services around Cardiff and Swansea reconfigure. So we've always got to be alert to the external influences in health because they are going to be providing services for our residents and we have to ensure that we get the best access we can and the best deal in the provision of those services. Bringing it in then to the three county positions, we've tried to look to see how we can chunk up, which is a very big challenging position. We're no different from local authority. We have all the challenges of an ageing demographic. We have social inequalities that we have to deal with that manifest in health need. So we've got all of those things that we have to show within this plan, a three-year plan we can be responsive to. What I did was to take our current position and say, okay, how do we chunk up this elephant? And when I looked at the mission statement, which is where we'd started with all the hope and promise back in 2009, actually if you step back, the actual idea of what we were trying to do was the right thing. What we hadn't done is aligned all of our capacity and our capability to that mission statement and made it real to people on the ground, our public, stakeholders and our partners. And that's what this plan will do. That's what's going to be different. So if you let me read you just the five, there are five areas that we're going to focus on within this plan. One is care closer to home. It's very trite as a care closer to home position because as Bernie has explained, it's really quite complex. We're talking about appropriate care for our elderly demographic. We're not talking about where acute interventions may appropriately take place because we know specialist acute interventions need to take place where the outcomes are better for the patient and that is determined by clinical setup and frameworks within that. So things like cardiac, we know go to Morriston. We know that most of our spinal work will go to the Heath in Cardiff and it will continue to do that. So we've got to be aware of the different interventions, where we want them to take place and why we need them to take place where they're going to be and the numbers that we want going through. So when we're talking about care closer to home, what are we talking about? We're talking about a care system that delivers for our biggest demographic challenge, our over 65s, 75s, 85s and their frailty needs in particular. So we're talking about a joined-up primary, community, social care, third sector position. And what we're going to do is show that join-up by locality. We have organised our system, there are three counties, but we've organised our system into seven localities. Those are effectively clusters of population supported by all of those services, about 50,000 to 60,000 population. It allows us at a granular level, at a local level, to make sure we've got the right capacity and capability to deal with a care closer to home agenda. In particular, we will be pursuing within that prevention, healthy lifestyle, that's going to be the future. Most health boards will have to show that they are taking on the early years, health prevention, looking at lifestyle choices because effectively that's what's causing the wave, the alcohol, smoking, aguacity is causing our future wave in terms of health need. So that will be built in at a locality level. It's no point having it being espoused from somewhere way on high. It's got to be part and embedded within our locality services. The next thing we said we'll do in that mission statement is we will focus on quality, safety and improving outcomes. I touched upon that just a minute ago. Yes, of course, specialist services will always be done down the M4 corridor. They've got the better outcomes for those services and we keep through audit, we clinically look and ensure that our patients in Wales are getting the services they deserve from those tertiary centres. What we've got to look at then is what we are going to do in our hospital configuration. Bernadine has explained to you, all four will remain intact. All four are needed in a network solution to deal with our geography. The three-year plan will explain what that network solution feels like. In the main, we're going to work through that with stakeholders and with our clinical engagement beginning next week. Literally going through specialties by specialty, where we need to make a difference. We will have cognisance of every inspection we've had. We've had health inspector at Wales, we've had WAO inspections where they've asked for service improvement. The plan will seek to address where we need to make service improvement in those areas. Flexible, skilled and motivated workforce, well, there's the rub. You know, how do we keep retaining and recruiting a really good workforce? We're looking in particular at, through the cluster process, the locality process, which is primary, community, social care, we're looking at trying to build in a lot of specialist knowledge, advanced practitioner roles. That will be very, very attractive to nurses, to people who never went into medicine per se, but are advanced practitioners in their own right, paramedics, advanced practitioner paramedics. We're going to go there and create a network of those throughout the clusters. They will work fully with our GPs who will be the senior clinical lead and that again will be something that on the ground, tangibly, we will show, we've organised Pembrokeshire into north and south, we will show what that feels like for north and south. In particular though, we will be looking to see how we can deal with our recruitment issues, especially our consultant recruitment issues. For that, we are looking at a large range of enablers to help us in these early years whilst we build up the networks. So there will be things like telemedicine, telecare featuring heavily in the plan. And until we can get the recruitment levels that we want, we are looking for a network solution of consultants to work together so that they can actually support all four sites. As I said, we're going to invest in prevention and health promotion. And the final one is, we'd expect that as a DOF and anyone in public sector, elimination of waste and duplication. We can only do that part of it actually by working smarter on the ground with key stakeholders. In that area, we're in particular looking at co-location. We're going to look at whether we need to keep the estate. I know that you are, many local authorities are looking at the degree of estate they have. We're going to be looking at that as well. We're going to be looking to see whether we can share certain back office functions and whilst we're locked into certain things that are central supply chain things, we will still look wherever we can to help support a local agenda. So those are the kind of concepts that are going to feature through the plan. The important thing that you need to know for Pembrokeshire is that the county will be described, the services in the county will be described and very importantly, the services in the north and the south will have a granularity, will have those completely described as well. What will I feel like if I'm, what services will I experience if I'm an elderly person in the north of South of Pembrokeshire? What, who can I go to? What's the expertise on the ground? How can I be maintained in keeping my independence for longer in my own home? And that's the care closer to home agenda. And that's basically it at this point. Six weeks in, feels a bit like a baptism of fire and now it's over to you.
Thank you very much, ladies, for both of those presentations. Would you be prepared to take a few questions? I have six members lined up here for questions. Could I start first of all then with our vice chair?
Thank you, chairman. And nice to see you both. I will totally agree with your opening statement. It's so refreshing to have an open, honest and transparent relationship. And I will say publicly, the last two years has been hell for the deal with things here in Pembrokeshire and not getting the actual facts through that we needed. I have a number of questions for you, Bernie, but I'll just have one to you at the moment. Since Withy Bush Hospital opened some thirty odd years ago, the bed capacity has halved with under 171 beds in a county that's growing and growing and growing. For example, there's a development in Half West with 700 houses coming. How can you explain why those numbers have been reduced so much and what's your intentions for more bed capacity in the county?
In terms of the detail, I don't have it. In terms of the numbers, because you're better informed than I am then, Wyn. And first and foremost, I need to thank you for your support to health as the spokesperson. I think you take the lead in the council. The bed capacity, also the way that we've delivered care has changed dramatically. So when I was training and when I was running around Withy Bush, we had patients who were in terms of orthopaedics, in terms of coronary care, in terms of surgical intervention. Patients would be in for 10 days, they would be in for 14 days, they may even be in for three weeks. The way that interventions have changed and the way that surgery and medicine technologies have changed means that patients are out even quicker. And where we need to be able to support those patients, you know, you're talking about cardiology, you may be in for three days after an intervention, after a heart attack. But you do need to have those support services when you're at home and through an outpatient and a rehabilitation programme. So I think the way that services have changed has been dramatic in its acute phase. The other thing that has changed is the way that we work with the community and social care to provide patients with the support they need at home. And so as a result of the decrease in beds, one would hope to see an increase in community provision. Now, I know because I'm old enough to know and I was here in the LHB that that was always a bone of contention but with the local authority and the CHC, that the feeling was that we were taking the beds out and we weren't actually putting in the community infrastructure. And I wouldn't disagree that we've got it right yet. I think we've still got a bit of investment to do. I think Pam will concur, the fact that we have to look at how we use some of those community beds to be able to provide that specific service to those people who need them at home. Karen spent a lot of time working and talking about the plan in terms of the elderly, but of course the other focus is on acute surgical interventions. It is in obstetrics and our mother and children agenda. And I think that for all of those agendas, for all of those clinical interventions, the way that those cares and technologies are delivered has changed dramatically.
Thank you, chairman. Good morning, ladies, and welcome in today. Mr Duce, you started off, when you started speaking to us, about communications and information and you apologised for that. Can I say that some two years ago, that is what the people at Pembrokeshire asked for, but no-one listened at that particular point and so very disappointed on that particular one. Question I would like to ask you at this particular point, do you not agree at the end of the day that more and more services are being removed from Pembrokeshire and also there's been reduction in some of the services? They've been reduced all the time, even today. We talk about reducing various things for children, having to go to Carmarthen certain times. Again, this is quality service that Pembrokeshire should have, we're not having. And I believe at the end of the day, as everyone has to, that services are downgraded. I'd like to ask you today what you think about the downgrading of them. The next question is the fact with regards to people from Pembrokeshire having to go to Carmarthen. Carmarthen's not ready for it in many ways, if I may even talk about car parking. I had people on to me this week saying they couldn't park their car in Carmarthen. So what chance have we got here in Pembrokeshire at the end of the day? It is so many uncertainties that's happening and I do believe that Pembrokeshire's having a raw deal on it. You did mention just now with regards to populations. Can I point out to you that Carmarthen, in nine miles of Carmarthen, there are 41,000 people living. Within nine mile of Withy Bush, there are 79,000 people. So the distance between Withy Bush and Glanquilly is the same as Glanquilly to Pembrokeshire. And I would have thought at the end of the day that it would have been far better to put the main services here in Pembrokeshire than what it is in Carmarthen. I do believe we've had a raw deal. Thank you, chairman.
Okay, so here it is, Peter. I think there's some, there is some of your comments that I wouldn't disagree with. The couple that I will draw out, I don't see that we are downgrading, but I understand what the perception of what that may look like. I think that the modern health service is very different from the health service that started when, when, what, when did Withy Bush open? When did Withy Bush open?
In 1934 or 1940.
It's, it's a very different model of care and it's a very different service and whether people accept it or not, that is actually the success of the NHS. We keep people alive and we're all going to be testament to that and we're all going to be grateful for that, but it has, it has to happen differently. There is an issue with Carmarthen, you are right, but we're not moving all our services to Carmarthen. We're moving a percentage of those services to where the case mix and the population will attract young, modern doctors who want to work. Car parking is an issue and if I'm standing in Carmarthenshire local authority, I'm arguing with them that I want their help because we need to have a better system so that we can provide better access, better bus routes. We've worked here with Pembrokeshire Transport and I can't find him, but he's here somewhere behind me. And we've done really well. We are challenging the way and the traditional models of transport. When I started, I said that we couldn't do this on our own and we can't. We can't do it on our own because actually it's not about the patient in the bed, it's about the access for that patient in the bed. It's about the access for that patient in their home. It's about the infrastructure. So the only thing I would challenge you on is we're not downgrading, we are providing safe and sustainable services and to do that, that is the only way that I am convinced we will attract young, modern doctors to the West. The traditional health service, the same way as the traditional public service that you supply, in terms of bins and, you know, all of those domestic services, they will change and we have to accept that we need a modern, a modern health service to attract and recruit if we're going to. It won't be the health board or the population of Pembrokeshire that will close Withy Bush. It will be the fact that we cannot recruit into Withy Bush.
Can I just say, the undertaking from this current planning round is that we will be very transparent in what is going into every community and what is going into every hospital. But you do need to be aware that it will be based upon evidence and it will be based upon clinical evidence in terms of outcomes. Now, that is a long journey. It's going to, you have our undertaking that it's going to be transparent, but we will go where we need to go to ensure that our patients and residents, no matter where they live, get the safest services and that they have good outcomes from those services. What we need to do in this planning round is show you where, in using certain principles and care closer to home, that everybody in a locality gets the same service or it meets, it's targeted in meeting certain inequalities. And it is about the public sector being far more honest about the fact that not all health communities or not all communities need the same invested resource. There are issues and challenges in some of our localities that are far greater than others and we have to be targeted and proportionate in our response because like you, we're dealing with a diminishing amount of resource to meet an ever-increasing need. As I said, the undertaking we're giving within this planning cycle is that you will see the evidence that we are currently working with, but it will be both clinical and resource based so you can see fully out where we're choosing and prioritising and hopefully modern C, you'll be part of the journey, you'll be part of the discussion and dialogue in terms of how we prioritise this.
Thank you. Now, members, I have 11 names down here in front of me. I'm also very conscious of the time as we go through the day, so I would ask you to be conscious of that as well. However, councillor Mike John.
Thank you, chair, and I will try and keep it short. I didn't plan to follow on from Peter, but it's very apt that I am really because firstly, I'd like to thank you for saying Withy Bush Hospital's safe. That is pleasing to hear and that is made in public. But it's the services at Withy Bush is what concerns people, not just the hospital. And what I'd like to mention now is the children's service which changes out for next weekend. Now, this is purely by luck for me, but not for my neighbours. But when I was on my way in here this morning, there was an ambulance that's at my neighbour's property because they're 18 months old, they're taking a tumble and the paramedics have decided it's a case that needs to go to hospital to be checked over. I followed the ambulance and it took 15 minutes to get into Half West from Monday at nine o'clock in the morning, that ambulance would go into Withy Bush, go into Glanquilly. And I think that is ludicrous to send somebody to Glanquilly for a check-up like that. You mentioned services have to change and specialist intervention, you'll have to travel. I don't think anybody can eat problems with that. That is basic, you've got to go travelling for specialist treatment. 24-hour children care isn't 24-hour children care isn't specialist, it's a basic necessity of any community. I would ask that, is that going to be reviewed? And if not, will you review it? It's putting a prejudice against children of Pembrokeshire that they have got to have a different standard of service than adults. Thank you.
Well, actually, I challenge you on the fact that it's a different level of service, and your information, I'm sorry to say, is slightly incorrect. In the day, that ambulance will go to Withybush Hospital. At night, it will go to Glanquilly. If people, if our children are sick, very sick, they will go to Glanquilly, where there will be a full team to look after the sick child in an environment that is suitable to the sick child. So for full hours in the day, there is an assessment unit. If you look at the model of care that our children are experiencing at the minute, overnight sometimes, there's only one child there, because they're not in hospital. The throughput of children now is very, very quick, it's very, very clinical, and so it needs to be. And in many instances, general practice manage most of our children. The emotional side, which I totally accept, around the fact that we are taking children's services out of Pembrokeshire, needs to be weighed out with a clinical safety of those children out of ours, where perhaps we haven't got the full team, where we haven't got the full environment, and where that does need to be a collective for the population. So I do challenge the fact that our services are not safe in the new model of care. I would say that we're putting a bigger safety net around them, and I do accept that it is difficult, the concept that we are going to have to travel in the night, but those are very few actually.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, thank you for coming today. And I think we'd all, before I ask my question, acknowledge one of the problems you're having at the moment is caused by the decision-making of the Welsh Labour Government, which have left Wales, the only part of the UK where health is not protected. But to move on to my point, just to highlight, just to highlight the fact that obviously we in Pembrokeshire do not have the luxury of our next nearest hospital being a matter of minutes down a dual carriageway, as they are doing other parts of the Hauldai area. But I'd like to talk about facts and sort of take on from councillor Stock's point. In 2013, Glanquilly had 5,214 general medicine admissions, while Withybush had 20% more, 20% more at 6,270. And in terms of accidents and emergency, it was a similar picture. Glanquilly in 2013, 38,253, Withybush 39,063. But a worrying trend in terms of accidents and emergency, as whilst Glanquilly is well-staffed by permanent consultants and specialist doctors, Withybush relies heavily on locums, which no doubt adds to the stability. I hear your points on what you're going to do in terms of sorting this out. I think the question would have been, where has your HR people been until now? But I would also like to, my question really, is you mentioned, you mentioned no knock-on effects. Obviously, paediatrics are going overnight, you made that clear. Can I have an assurance that because of obviously that reduction in throughput of children, there will be absolutely no knock-on effects to accident and emergency in Withybush Hospital, and it will be 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
Okay. I do want to pick up your first observations. I'm not a politician, I work to an elected position, the same way as the people of Pembrokeshire do for our elected council. We've had a National Field Report, so just to challenge what you've said, and I'm not defending any political party, and if anybody would like to read the National Field Report, it is on the web. And what it actually says is that we are not disadvantaged in Wales in the same way, and we compare favourably with the other three countries. So, you know, you could take that with a political head or not, but that's what the report says. And please, I would recommend that you read it, because it is a good read. Notwithstanding the fact that it's given us more money, but it is a good read. And the second thing, I think, is that I have said that Withybush won't close, I have said that we will come out with a plan that says what will be the make-up of services in Withybush. The front door is essential. Whatever else happens, and the way that we manage, the front door is essential. So there are no plans to close A&E. The third thing that I need to pick up is around the fact that you gave me a list of numbers for admissions and A&E attendances. And this is what I'm asking you for, as well as the public. How many of those were appropriate? How many of those could we have dealt with differently? Because a list of numbers doesn't actually tell us what the case makes. That is for us to be able to do some work on. But we have to work with our population so that they know who to contact, when they need to contact it. And, you know, I'm sure you want to talk about WAST. The way that we're working with WAST is actually, has to be through the public. We have to be able to triage, we have to make sure that our public can access services when they need them, but in the appropriate place. That doesn't mean to say that they don't need to call on any element of the health service. But I would challenge those figures as, were they the appropriate attendances, were they the appropriate admissions? Were some of those in those early days when we didn't get our act together in terms of health and social care, and the way that we wrapped around support around our population? I don't know. But I think the work that we're doing now will tell us that.
Councillor Miles Pepper.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, ladies. In the main, I refer to the presentation by Bernardine Rees, and my point one, not in your particular order, was that you declared a rosy future for Hauldai. It's not going to close, will not, cannot close. It's strategically important to the Welsh NHS. Specialist interventions, treatment, people will have to travel, which of course, I think is understood by all. You spoke, and most importantly, in my view, the need to develop, I it wasn't in place before, mutual interest in dialogue with such as this authority, and I very much welcome that. You mentioned the difficulties with recruitment problems, and in your presentation, Miles, you didn't elaborate, you largely, in fact, not entirely blamed the press, but Karen Myers has added on to that and puts a balance on that view. And whatever comes out of the day, I would like it to go into the public domain in a fair and balanced way. Finally, you said you know the problems that you face. So my question is, have you the resource to eradicate them?
Hello, Miles, long time no see. Well, I suppose working together, we never have the full resource. I mean, I think that's pretty evident in the way that we have to manage our business in any public service. But what we have to do is maximise the resource that we've got. I mean, we're in a very humble position, that the minister has made some decisions that have an effect on other parts of public service. So for us, we have an accountability to deliver that in the best way that we can, and that maximises those benefits to our population. You know, for us, though, in terms of the recruitment of Pembrokeshire, and I do take your point about the balance, I wasn't having a go at the press, but it does feel that every time I pick up a paper in the last year, and I hope that some people have seen that we are trying to change that, and we are trying to get some balance in, because we are coming out more and more to talk to people and have honest conversations. But the problem for us in Pembrokeshire isn't actually the money, it's actually the fact that we can't attract people to work in Pembrokeshire. I mean, you know, in my, in my time as the chief executive in the LHB, on my first year as the director of primary care in Huellvar, I tried on enormous occasions to attract an oncologist to Pembrokeshire. We have to work with partners to get that pathway through. And I think that it genuinely isn't about the money, it's about making our service modern, sustainable, that young doctors will want to come. I think the teaching in Huellvar Teaching LHB, University LHB, will help us if we can develop more links with education. I think the facilities that are provided by yourselves, you know, Pembrokeshire's a fabulous place to work, it's a fabulous place to live. But actually, if we haven't got good schools, if we haven't got good support services, if we haven't got the clinical case mix, then youngsters are not going to come. And, you know, that's the reality of how we have to work together. This isn't just a health position. And as much as I would be quite happy to take the blame for it and say, yes, hold our hands up, you know, we need to do better, collectively, we need to do better.
If I could just also inform the council, in terms of resource, evidently, it's always challenging. About 15% of our money, nearly £90 million, goes on drugs. We never stop a drug, it's always clinically, as long as it's clinically evidenced that it's in the interest of that individual to take it, there is no barring on the drug spend in Hauldai. But, boy, does it come in at a price, because if you spend £90 million of your £750 million on drugs, then you can see what a huge impact that has on the other areas that you also have to cover. You've got to cover primary care, and all the contractors that you need there, and you've got to cover, obviously, all your consulting base. So how do we look to see if we can, the recruitment issue really is an issue to us. We're spending about one and a half million a month, a month, on doctors and nurses who don't work with us full-time. They are agency, they are locum, they are bank. We have got to get those networks in place that attract people to realise that when they come to work in what is seen to be a rural location, that there is sufficient peer networks for them to operate safe practice. That's what every professional wants to do, they want to have peer support and review. So that's our challenge, is to get that £18 million of, I could say to you, exponential spend, double what our doctors sometimes are paid locally, and they're not accountable to us, and they come in and they go out. And we've got to do something about making sure we've got our own critical mass, and that's what we're playing for. But evidently, against the demographic challenge, and against the fact that our biggest intervention is a drug one, evidently, we will always face cost pressures in health services. It's just the nature of the beast. It's now really about whether we can mitigate for areas where we are leeching, and more importantly, we are not sustaining our services on the ground.
Leader.
Thank you, Chair. My points won't require an answer, and it might be helpful from this point on if members could make their points and perhaps a final summing up just to expedite the discussion, Chair, with your blessing. Thank you for your approach, I'm not going to say much. Thank you for the honesty that you've shown in recognising the budget challenges, and therefore, that is leading your decisions about clinical excellence. I think a penny has dropped with a few of us today in terms of this issue of recruitment. And if we are all in this county merchants of doom, we are not going to attract people to this county to be doctors, to be nurses, to be officers in this council. We have recognised the challenges of peripherality in this council with our ability to recruit staff. So we understand that point. And I think it's important that we are advocates from this point, and in recognising your honesty, of talking the job up, of saying, these are exciting times for health services in Pembrokeshire. I think it is exciting that you speak about professional opportunities through innovative practice. The opportunity of sharing public cost is something that we have done between ourselves previously, and I place on record the willingness of this council to do so further. In terms of services, I'll leave you with a couple of thoughts. What worries us is access to services in a county that's geographically peripheral. We have people in our communities who are in financial need, who cannot afford to make decisions as to where they travel. We will work with you, we have worked with you, as you've acknowledged, to provide transport solutions for those people. And we must be assured that that peripherality, those people in financial need, those people who are in need through age or disability, have access to the very best healthcare. And I, we, I'm sure, will work with you on that. And just to finish this point, this is a standing item before this council, and may I suggest from this point forward, with your blessing, that you provide a quarterly update to this council of your work, of the changes, of the proposals, so that we can be appraised with a written record of what's happening. And at a further point, if members are so minded, if you would accept the invitation to come back at some point in the future, wherever it's felt necessary, I would feel that we've actually done something positive here today. Thank you.
We will come back, and we will provide a quarterly response, and we will come back at your invitation at any time.
Well, thank you very much. Now, we still have nine speakers here on the list. I will give you the opportunity. What I would like to do at this stage is to invite each of you in turn to make your point, and make it hopefully briefly, and then we should be able to have a summing up in full. I think that'll be the most productive way of moving forward on this item. So could I call on councillor Mike James, please?
Could I please speak on behalf of the residents of North Pembrokeshire, a very rural area. A new hospital in Cardigan has been on agenda for nearly 30 years. We are in the wilderness between Bronglais, 40 miles away, Withybush, 30, Glanquilly, 30, and Prinspilir, 50 miles away. Since the closure of Cardigan Hospital, patients living in North Pembrokeshire who are following hospital treatment have to travel to North Pembroke, to Pembroke Dock, 74 miles away, or Trigaron, 80 miles, for a spite. This is a huge burden on their families and loved ones. A petition organised by Cardigan Hospital League of Friends, delivered to Welsh Government, signed by 14,000 residents, for beds in the new building in Cardigan. This is a clear message to the Health Board. This has to be a strong message to you. Could you please take this on board when you make a decision on what is placed within the new building? I thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, Mike. Councillor Kilminster.
Thank you, Chair. On the issue of recruitment, I have to say that I've seen, since I've been on the council, no evidence that Huellvar Health Board has actually tackled this issue in what would be considered a professional manner. If this issue had been in business, they would have tackled it, and they would have tackled it properly. And it's just, at the moment, now forming a huge excuse to the people of Pembrokeshire. Now, I realise that you've actually taken this role on, and you've come into it, and both of you that day. Message I have to say to you is, please do something that is actually going to produce those doctors here, because the people of Pembrokeshire frankly deserve it, and they're getting a second rate service as a direct result of that lack of recruitment. The next thing is to do with waiting times, which nobody's actually mentioned. Now, I've taken a slight personal interest in that, because my wife is actually waiting for something at the present moment. So far, she's gone nine months and hasn't seen a specialist. The situation is extremely poor. I went onto your website to see what your waiting list times were, they didn't exist. I'm sorry, in an open and transparent, what we should be looking for, that information on basic things is just missing and isn't there. So please, let us have a look, because as a patient, we have to decide what we want to do. Because we have people now who are waiting an awful lot of time, and these things are causing them considerable concern. It's not just my wife, there's hundreds and thousands of people out there in the same situation. We need to have better outcomes, and if you can provide those, I'll give you the support. But since I've been here, all I've seen is Huellvar Health Board actually go backwards in terms of the service it is providing to the people of Pembrokeshire. Thank you.
Councillor Mike Evans, please.
Welcome to Bernardine and Karen. Mike Evans representing Temby. First of all, a spoonful of sugar before the bad stuff. May I acknowledge the support you've afforded to Temby Surgery? May I acknowledge the support you've afforded to Temby Surgery this summer. It's been most appreciated, and it's gone some way to relieving the pressures in that area. And also, it would be wrong of me not to mention the support of councillor Wyn Evans in his work on the health, with the Health Board towards what the people are the south of the county. You mentioned care closer to home and care in the community. It's interesting, it's always care closer to home. And you spoke about what you're not cutting Withy Bush, and we're very grateful of that, and it's good and the positive, the positive message that's coming out. I'm speaking about what you have cut, and I'm speaking about Temby MIU, serving 20,000 people in the south east of this county. And let's look at what this decision has achieved. You spoke earlier, and I'm not going to break into song, but it's not about the money. No savings achieved. A new six million facility mothballed, underused, wasting away, close, very close, in the community of 20,000 people to afford you to be their services, is where you're speaking, you're speaking earlier. And then, so what has it achieved? You spoke about what it's achieved. More pressure on Hertford West A and E. That's what it's achieved. More pressure on the ambulance services. That's what it's achieved. With the summer increases in the south of the county, this decision makes absolutely no sense at all. It makes no sense to anybody here in this chamber. I can see you looking, that I don't think it makes sense to you. But this one, not you, but this was made by your predecessor, they got it wrong. But it's not too late. What in your words we need is new dialogue. The leader spoke about not answering questions. My question is very easy, very quick. What's needed here is an urgent meeting with Sechon, which is the South East Pembrokeshire Health Network, you know well, and especially Mansal Thomas. You know Mansal well, as well with your work. An urgent meeting with Mansal, Sechon, and the county councillors, and we can reverse this diabolical decision. You said about you couldn't attract the staff. We had the staff in Temby. It was the staff couldn't be attracted to Withy Bush. This facility can be utilised for the good of all 20,000 people in the south east of the county, and it's there, sitting there, rotting away. Now, reverse that decision, just say yes.
Thank you, Mike. Constable John Preston, please.
Thank you, Chair. I have to mirror exactly what Constable Evans has just brought up, he beat me to it. My sentiments are exactly the same. I live in a, and represent a neighbouring ward and a community to Mike. It's a purpose-built building, and we can't understand why it's been mothballed, why it's not being used. It's got every facility there, it's sitting there. I don't even think there's a maintenance contract on it at the moment, and I have to support what Mike spoke to. Please reverse that decision. And please, can I invite you to the next Sechon meeting? I don't know what the date is, but I can tell you it's at Penley Village Hall. Okay? Thanks, Chair.
Ladies, I have five speakers left. Are you prepared to wait and let me run through them, and then I can give you the opportunity of addressing the issues? Or is there anything you wish to address at this moment? Yes?
I have met with Mansal. I've met with him twice. And we are doing a piece of work with the CHC and with the group that you outlined. And we agree that we've got to look at Temby in a different light. Please don't take that as the promise that minor injuries are going back. But we will look at it in an evidential way against the way that the services has been provided. But we are already in contact with Mansal and the group. So I don't think we need to come to another meeting, because we are working with the whole of the community, not just that particular group.
Very much. Constable Vivian Stoddard.
Thank you, Chair. Mrs Rees, you touched on the public's perception of what's going on. Part of the problem is that the public are suffering from change fatigue, because you and your colleague will know better than I probably, that we've had change and reorganisation in the NHS going back to 1990. I think, on average, it's been a change every three years. And every time that change has been sold to the public because it's going to improve patient care. That evidence hasn't worked through. So my question, or point is, what confidence now can Pembrokeshire people have in yet another plan, the three-year plan mentioned by Mrs Miles? Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Stoddard. Constable Ken Rowlands.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, ladies, for coming this morning. With the, with the extra emphasis on community care, that the whole primary care situation is under great pressure, which means that you have to negotiate with our GPs. Now, when I first asked this question about two years ago, that negotiation hadn't been completed. Have you completed your negotiations with GPs? And if you haven't, what, how far have we got with this arrangement? Because that is terribly important.
Constable Paul Miller, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just two very quick points from me. So people are concerned about the changes that are being made at Withy Bush, but particularly, they're concerned about the discussion around knock-on effects. So for me, it's a kind of absolute non-negotiable and a real kind of critical need for Pembrokeshire that they've got a fully functioning 24/7/365 accident and emergency facility. And I just want to provide an opportunity, and I think you've parked on it, but to be absolutely clear, that that's a vital objective for the Health Board, that you write behind it, that you will maintain that service to the end, and that a walk-up A and E facility, no one gets turned away at Withy Bush Hospital. If you arrive, no matter what the time of the day, you will be seen and treated by specialists. And yes, there may be a transfer after that, once you've been triaged, but in terms of walk-up, that facility is available and will always be there. The second point I'd like to make is around recruitment. I mean, I pick up a lot that, I understand what you're saying about recruitment, it's difficult to recruit to specialist posts, and I'm hearing that message loud and clear from you. I'm hearing loud and clear from some members of the public that they just don't believe it. And I've no idea where the truth lies. You know, I don't have both sides of the argument at my fingertips. What I think would be useful is if the Health Board was a bit more open in terms of what they do around recruitment. So it would be nice to see, you know, we recruited to this point, post, on this date, we had this number of applicants, we shortlisted this many people, and we didn't appoint because. And I think that would enable people to actually see what is going on. And those are the two points I'd like to make, Chair, really, around 24/7/365 A and E coverage, and a bit more transparency around the recruitment process.
I have two speakers left. Firstly, Constable Pearl Wellin, and then Constable Lyn Jenkins.
I did indicate before, Tim, Wynne wrote them down. It's essential I speak, nobody's mentioned, South Pems.
Constable Hall, your name is not on the list at the moment. I'm calling, I am calling for Constable Pearl Wellin, please.
Thank you. Bernardine and myself and Constable Perkins were on steering committee for South Pems Hospital some years ago, so that question is coming up from Constable Hall. My question is, or something that's very personal to me, is Ward 10. What is happening to Ward 10, and what is happening to the money that has been given by patients and families for refurbishment and new premises for Ward 10? Thank you.
Constable Lyn Jenkins, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for coming today, because I think we've all appreciated that. This leaflet came from my door yesterday, which I'm sure you're familiar with, and it's all very helpful, but my shock when I saw that this one dedicated ambulance vehicle, which we had been told was dedicated to mothers in labour and newborns, is now also dedicated to children. So what is it being dedicated to next?
And finally, Constable Brian Hall, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, ladies. I'm from Pembrokdoc. I'm going to be parochial, very similar to Constable Evans. And I'm sure you're well aware that the Hadem is obviously the energy capital of the country. It's the centre of the petrochemical. I say it's the third busiest, if I'm out of Pembrokeshire, I always say it's the second, because I think it deserves number one. But anyway, it's surely to get there in the end. Deepest natural harbour, and I'm sure you're aware that in Valero at the moment, there's a major shutdown. I don't know the exact figure, somebody might put me right, but I believe there's somewhere in the region of about 3,000 workforce. Obviously, John, my colleague, he probably knows more about it than me. My main concern, obviously, is South Pems. There is no member of staff that I don't know. I know most of the patients that's in there. I go in there two or three times a week. And yeah, I've wheeled some of them out so they can have a cigarette, which they shouldn't do, but just trying to be present. And as I said, I know most of them. I would love you today to give me the guarantee, as you did for Hertford West, that South Pems wouldn't close. And the reason I emphasise this, and I'm sure you will agree, it is the lifeline for the south of the county. I'm talking about Pembroke and Pembrokdoc. Now, long before your people, your days, anyway, I was actually born in Riverside. I'm not saying that was a good sign or a bad, but in them days, that was the main hospital. My auntie was a sister in South Pems before the war, during, until it closed. East Back was our cottage hospital in Pembroke, and Park Street was the cottage hospital in Pembrokdoc. They obviously went when South Pems opened again. And finally, both my two sons, who are over 40, were born there, and at one time, you could everything, have everything you could think of, from bursts to X-rays and so forth, and minor operations. That's gone. The main thing is the A and E. Since January, I have taken four people from there, happened to be there, who had been dropped off by a van, a vehicle from work, with an arm or a leg, or whatever it was, bandage and bleeding, because there was no A and E, they didn't know. And I have driven them to Hertford West. I've left them there, and they've got to find their own way back, otherwise, God knows how long before. The main thing to consider is this. If, and the bridge does close on regular intervals, it is approximately a 56 mile round trip from Pembrokdoc to Hertford West. That is the difference of life and death, if you're trying to sustain life from some of these petrochemical industries. And there are accidents. They do happen, regrettably. But I'd love you to say that you're not going to close South Pems on the basis of, I would love you to reopen A and E if it was only in a daytime element. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. My vice-chairman has asked me to allow him 10 seconds to impart some information which he forgot to give you during his initial address. So, very brief.
Yes, I'm a member of the Deanery of Medicine based in Cardiff University Health Board in Heath Hospital. Much of it has been around recruitment in Huell Varr. I should say, I sit on a number of panels where young doctors are going on specialities across all Wales and into Avon and Somerset. And I do my very best to attract doctors to come to Pembrokeshire and the other two counties. And I tell you, they all want to go to the bigger cities. They want more practice in medicine in the Swansea Vale BM, in Cardiff and Vale, and in Bristol and Avon. So I mean, it is an ongoing concern, and I'm just really backing up what Bernardine has said. It's something we are trying our very best to do. The Deanery is separate to the Health Boards, it's an independent body, made up of senior consultants, and I sit there as a member, representing all Wales. So we are doing our very, very best to attract young doctors. I tell them that the extreme sports in Pembrokeshire, the lovely locations, it still doesn't work, but we are trying. Thank you.
Ladies, you have been very patient and tolerant, I must say. May I ask you to sum up at your leisure?
I think in the interest of time, what might be more helpful is if in our next report, we answer some of the questions that you've asked of us today. Sorry?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Thank you.
Hang on a minute. In the interest, as Miles alluded to, I never promised anything. And in fact, they won't let me out if I'm going to promise anything, because I'm a chairman now, not an officer. But we will, we will, on a quarterly basis, give you a report. We will pick up all of the issues that were raised today. You may not like some of the answers in them, but I'm sorry that that's the way that we're going to have to do business, but we can have the debate about them. And I am quite welcome and quite happy to come at any time, Chairman, that you're, that I'm invited, with the relevant officer or our new chief executive.